Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we are good.
I'm thinking.
All right. Stand for the pledge. The meeting is still live, even as the state of America. And to your honor, which stands on my nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like it is six thirty, so I will open up the January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The Brownlee, Brownlee County Council Meeting, all of the council councils are present, as well as town manager Mosadon and buyer chief Eric Gifford. And the first thing we're starting with this evening is opening up a public hearing or a public comment on our codification ordinance. So we all have that. Well, actually, nobody has, right? You have a little copy, Melissa?
Um, I gave it to you back in November.
Okay.
We might not have it.
There's more over there.
There's some more on the table. The codification ordinance by our charter were required to do a codification of our ordinance every two, uh, ten years. And the last time I did it was two thousand and fifteen, but because people is taking over as a new town clerk. Um, I just wanted to do a codification for her that lists all of the current ordinances that we have. In, um, in our, our book of ordinances in Bradley. And so it just basically lists all of our ordinances that we have, um, in effect. So that was really, that's really all it is, but it is an ordinance, so it does require a public hearing.
Any public comment on the codes? Okay. Any comments, questions from the council? On the list of codes that are on the forum here? And then later on, we'll just.
Yes, don't do a motion to accept. Uh, which I didn't put on the agenda, but to accept the codification ordinance as presented.
Okay. Anything online?
Nothing online.
Okay, just one other quick question, I guess, before I close the public hearing. So will we recertify this every ten years going forward, or is there different cadence?
Yep, every ten years, what our charter requires.
If there's no other comments, I will close the public hearings on the codification ordinances. And then I will make a motion to re- review the minutes of the January second, two thousand twenty four town council as the town council meeting as presented. Oh, second that. Motion's been made seconded from the minutes from the last meetings. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Just one quick one. I don't know if it makes a huge difference, but we're talks about we'll be advertising a public hearing on January thirty first.
Okay.
Anything else on the minutes from the last meeting? If not, we'll vote. Jim?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marx and I. We'll run down to citizens' requests.
Our what?
The requests from the meeting in person. We'll check, obviously, the, uh, the online version a little bit later. So we'll jump down to manager's report.
Okay. Um, I do want to just, we talked, I don't think we talked in person since um, I emailed town council asking for permission to go on vacation. Um, so just to verify, I'm gonna be on vacation February seventh to February fourteenth. Um, the board meeting that we have regularly scheduled for the thirteenth, we talked about the email rescheduling to February fifteenth. So just to let you know, that's what our, my plan is moving forward if that works for the town council.
The fifth piece is what day of the week?
It's a Thursday.
Finally.
Um, in your boxes, I've provided a list of, uh, twenty one automatic real estate tax refloater services. These are taxes that were due in the year of two thousand twenty one that remain unpaid. They were leaned in, um, July of two thousand twenty two. They have a hundred and eighty days, uh, from that time to pay payments if they don't. They're sent another notice, which was sent out in November, which is a thirty day notice telling them that they have thirty days to make payment, or the property automatically forecloses to the town of Bradley. Um, and there's two properties. One is Roger Black and Shelley, Shelby McQuard of one twenty three Penny Lane. Um, it's a trailer in Penny Lane, Sherrill Park, so there's no land value. It's just a building of sixteen thousand five hundred, and they also have the home set exemption of twenty thousand. Uh, just some background information. They purchased a trailer in twenty twenty, and they haven't made any real estate payments since then. Um, due to their home set exemption being higher than the value of their trailer, they actually didn't get taxed for twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. So the amount that is due to retain ownership of that trailer is three sixty-three, sixty-four.
Is that still occupied, Melissa?
I went up there and it appears to be. So, yes. Um, another, the other one is Lillian Coulter and Terry Coulter, forty-three Highland Avenue. The land value is thirty-two thousand, the building value is eighty-three thousand six hundred, and they too have an exemption of twenty thousand dollars for the homestead exemption. Back end information on that. In two thousand seventeen, the two thousand seventeen real estate taxes were leaned in and leaned and then were closed on in January of two thousand twenty. Payment was made in May of two thousand twenty for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen taxes, because that's what would require when taxes are foreclosed on that all outstanding real estate taxes to pay, and that was done in May of two thousand twenty. Another payment was made for the two thousand twenty taxes in June of two thousand twenty one, and no other payments have been made. A Lillian Coulter passed away in two thousand sixteen, but there's never been any fully documents received, so I'm assuming it hasn't been done. Um, both properties re- uh, did not claim their certified mail-in that they received for their thirty day notice stating that it would be if they didn't pay by January twelfth, then the property would be automatically foreclosed on. So as we've kind of talked, the laws are changing about, um, automatic foreclosures, and I did, uh, an update to our policy. I still haven't heard anything brought from our attorney, and that is because they're still creating policy on that new law. But my recommendation to the town council would be that we move forward when sending another certified letter to both these property owners with their required document that were required, uh, the written demand of former owner to use an alternative sale process just to start the process, and hopefully by the time they'll probably not gonna clean it, so to be quite honest. It's probably gonna end up being something that we have to go through the sheriff's office, but our policy does state we will send it by certified mailing one more time to give them an additional chance. So.
The Highland Avenue property is still occupied?
So I don't believe there's anybody there. That's, that's what I, that's what it appears. There's no, you know, it's not been filed or anything like that, so. The neighbors have been curious about the property, and they say that it's been vacant.
Do you need a motion?
Um, yeah, sure. A motion to move forward with another certified mailing, giving them an additional chance to redeem.
Second that? Is motion been made seconded? Any questions or additional comments? We'll vote. Jim?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marx and I.
Um, just, this seems like so long ago, but early in January, uh, we published the two thousand twenty four Bradley broadcast. Um, and that was published on our website and our email list. Did you see it, Charlie?
Yes.
You sure picture?
Yes. Um.
Drop right out.
They did. Uh, I only had fifty copies made. There was some over the post office, there's some here, but, um, just to kind of FYI, that was, was done. Uh, we did receive a request from Main Forest and Lobby Museum for sponsorship, uh, for their annual brochure, and we have done this in the past. The lowest sponsorship amount is three hundred dollars, and there's five hundred and fifty dollars available in our nonprofit funding appropriation. Uh, the previous nonprofit donations we've done this year is a hundred dollars to Community Helping Counseling, a hundred and fifty to Eastern Agency on Aging, a hundred to Northern Light Home Care and Hospital, and a hundred dollars to Old Town Museum.
What did we do last time, Melissa? Just the minimum?
The minimum, yeah.
I'm moving. We provide the minimum again this year.
I'll provide a hundred dollars to that.
Okay.
As a donation, sort of mill and eighty one of them.
Okay.
I'll second the motion that Dwayne made. Any other comments or questions? Well, Jim?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marx and I.
Um, and then in regards to, uh, one fourteen Cram Street, uh, both Robert Wang and Mike Michael Hayden were simply served, uh, with the town council's resolve that the town council is requesting a court action to demolish and clean up the property of one fourteen Cram Street. Um, Michael Hayden, uh, reached out to me, and he stated he wants nothing to do with the property and, or Robert, and would like to sign it over to Robert. So, um, I explained to Michael that until the property is signed over, he will continue to receive notice of court proceedings and notices. I also wrote to Robert stating that Michael had reached out to me and would like to sign the property over. Robert's response back to me is that he'd been advised by his attorney, who I've never, ever met, but I'm sure that is out there somewhere, not to speak to Bradley officials. He is suing the town for the damage that was done to his car when the town cleaned up his waste off the road, and he also requested Michael Hayden's contact information. And Michael specifically requested that his contact information be kept confidential from all parties. So I will not be giving him Michael's contact information. And in the ad, nothing really has changed. It's impossible to work with Robert Wang and impossible for him to get help. So um, the complaint has been drafted and filed with the court, and so we're still awaiting information on the land use violation that we went to court for back in high December, and information on when that hearing will be for the demolition order. That's all. It's the same story. It is impossible to work with. Impossible. That was a perfect situation for him to possibly get the property in his name, get some grant assistance perhaps from penguins or other entities, though I, they probably wouldn't at this point help him because the condition of the property has deteriorated so badly, but it was a good opportunity for him, and he just tossed suicide.
Melissa, it's my understanding there are two court dates out in front of us, one on the thirteenth and one on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Is that information?
I, I, I believe the fifteenth, I know that there is one.
Yeah.
Um, I'll be in Augusta that day for an LBC committee meeting, um, and the thirteenth I'll be in Mexico, so.
I'm gonna plan to go to both of them.
Okay, great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Yeah.
Excuse me, Michael responded, you know?
Yes, I, I talked, I had a long conversation with him today, and, yeah. So that's all, really all I have from my manager's report.
Any questions, comments on the manager's report from this evening? If not, we'll jump down to new business. New business from you, Melissa?
We do need a motion to accept the codification ordinance of what's presented.
So.
Second. Motion's been made second. Any other questions or comments on the codification ordinance? If not, we vote. Jim?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marx and I, and I'll sign and send around the paper for our signatures.
And then my other item is municipal budget. Everybody was waiting for that, I know. Uh, so, uh, as per charter, uh, required to present the municipal budget to Rutherford Board first, and so I did that. And so as is presented right now, uh, the cost of living allowance, uh, is three point two percent, and the budget is currently thirty thousand three seventy-four above uh, that allowance. Some highlighted, um, information, just to let you know, uh, I did try to, I did create a new reserve, um, fund to upgrade our municipal software. Um, the information from our software company is included um, in this binder under, I believe Trio is the tab, and that, um, they are going from, um, server based to web based platform, and this platform has been available for about four or five years, and I've been hesitant about jumping on board because I wanted them to get all the bugs worked out. They no longer are performing updates to the server based platform. They're only providing updates to the web based, um, platform. The cost is about six thousand dollars, so I'm hoping that we would put a reserve in for next year. And for this coming, this budget, and then for the next year, and then be able to move forward with it in twenty twenty-six.
Melissa, what's involved in that six thousand dollar cost? Is that an equipment upgrade?
Yeah.
Just software?
It's helping us cost it.
That sounds like.
Yeah. Yeah.
IT support and all sorts of things, or?
Um, there's more information in your packet, but, um, the consensus from other municipalities is that, and I have used it because I've, I, uh, I've been helping, uh, the town of Solon, um, on Mondays. They have a new clerk, so I'm gonna be helping, and they have the web based software. Um, and it's very similar to the software that we have now, so I think it's user friendly, but no, that definitely is just the update.
Hmm. I think we're treating that as a one-time cost to make the change?
It is a one-time cost, and then there's an annual additional cost of right now, six hundred dollars per year, or on top of our software programs that we already pay now, which is up those of thirteen thousand dollars, an additional six hundred dollars would be added to that per year.
Jesse, is that required in order to run the state?
No.
Not?
No, but it is required. Well, that's how we process our motor vehicle restrictions, so yes, essentially. Otherwise, we back, we back to hand typing them. I don't even know if state law can do that anymore.
There's no state money.
No, there's absolutely no state money for that. Um, and it does real, it does our real estate and personal property assessments and collections. Budgetary, the reports that you get on a monthly basis, those all come from Trio, so I think it is essential to run the municipality. It's just, there's no other option in me.
Apparently, they know that as well.
They do. They do. Yeah. So.
It looks like there's two proposals.
Yeah.
Under that.
So one is they would host us, meaning they would perform all of our backups and all of that information. That's an additional four thousand dollars a year. And then the other option is if we continue to run it as we do now, where we run our own backups. And we have a backup system now that it automatically backs up at the end of the night, and then once a week I trade them out. I have a box. I don't know what it is. It's probably got a nice formal name. It's in Eric's office, locked up, and then once a week I just go over and change them up. So if something happens, we always have at least a week worth of data saved, so. So, yeah, that's, uh, that's a new account that I just started. Um, our legal fees increased substantially, um, because of we've used a lot of legal fees this year. Usually, we carry forward unused legal fees, and so we don't need to ask the voters for more legal fees, but we've been been eating them up because of one fourteen Cram Street. Um, a new law has been enacted that will take effect in January of twenty-five. Um, there's, they're still doing a policy on that, uh, bill too, what's called the Paid Family Leave Act, and I think it's gonna work very similar to unemployment, in which the employer will pay a percentage, and it will go into a fund, and then employees will be able to withdraw from that fund a certain percentage for their paid leave act. So that's a new line item. Uh, the way that I, I wrote, I read the law, it's one percent of the employee's wage, and that's what I base that fund on. The other night I participated in a, a listening session, and there might be a lower rate for employee, uh, employers with less than fifteen employees, so we might have a lower contribution than other community or other employers, but they're still working out the details on that. Um, our ambulance subsidy increased by twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Our allowable amount that we could increase our budget for charter is twenty-three thousand four ninety-two. So that
works out.
Quite my, you know, cola allowance. Um, and Chief Gifford is still working on his, uh, budget a little bit, so the, the money, the numbers that are in the budget tonight are those of what we had in there for last year, so over the next couple of weeks. At your leisure, feel free to, um, look that over. And if, Jim, I know this is your first budget, so if you have any questions, um, you're gonna have to ask me tomorrow or Friday, 'cause I'm on vacation this week. But I will, you know, if you come, if you wanna meet me before the next meeting or something like that, it's, and if you want different information or you want different data, just let me know, and I can try to provide that.
Thank you. The ambulance increase, Melissa prompts one question. What do we know about that Blue Ribbon Commission? Are they doing anything at all?
So the Blue Ribbon Commission met again. Um, I don't really know what their outcome is yet. They haven't published a report, but the legislators did give thirty million dollars to be dispersed to, um, ambulance services. But it is still trying to figure out how to disperse it. It's through like a grant type of program. There was, if I remember correctly, there was some stipulations that it couldn't be used to, like, add a new a vehicle or add a new service. It was to try to sustain, but those funds haven't been dispersed yet.
Most funds obviously would go to Old Town, right?
Yes.
No telling if it would serve to reduce our increase.
One would hope they would. Yes, Kevin Howell was on that. So I actually, uh, was on the commission last year and nominated Kevin. We'll take my place this year because I thought that he uh, he did a great job with a regional program in the Carmel area, so, yeah.
So it looked like you laid out mostly the beginning of the budget, like all the dates between now and when we have to have everything solidified, so everybody can look at that schedule. Obviously, we'll have, you know, in-depth conversations about, um, the booklets, has everybody's chance to review them, and comes back to the council questions or concerns or changes, but we have several meetings between now and when we have to have everything solidified. It looks like, uh, on April twenty-third.
Yeah.
Public here.
Yeah. Uh, that's, I, that's all I have for new business.
Any new business from the council? This is a good question, Missy. I, in my box, I'm not sure if it was in everybody's. It was like a little roster of.
So at the last meeting, um, there was some comments asking if we knew how many views we had, and this was the third of January, and that kind of outlines how many views we get on YouTube. Um, if you click on our Facebook link, it will show you how many views we have currently. So people are going back, not a large amount, but.
Nineteen?
There's what?
Three right now.
There's three. Oh.
We're, we're at nineteen?
Wait, or what?
Is that what it said? On the, is the three, the zero, the one, three, the seven?
So three looked at it that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, at that meeting?
At that meeting, yeah.
Do you have a better idea of how many people have viewed it since?
I have, I did not look. I kind of put up, but I put that in your box, but I can, and, and it's pretty easy to.
From this populist Taylor Swift, looks like.
Only I could sing.
Or play football.
That's a bumblebee.
Any other new business from the council or any other comments on the, uh, the budget that was presented this evening? If not, we'll jump down to unfinished business. Finished business from you, Missy?
Uh, I just wanted to kind of let you know, in the last couple of meetings, we've talked about some properties. Uh, one, you gave us uh, authority to move forward with an official land use, uh, land use violation with uh, without compliance could lead to a court proceeding. The owner of eight fifty-nine Main Street, which is located, uh, towards, uh, the end of Bradley, um, towards Eddington. Um, so he did receive a formal, uh, notice of violation for an unlicensed junkyard. And he came in today and spoke to Dean. So next week, he is gonna come in with, meet with Dean and go over how to become a permitted business, like if he is doing an automobile repair shop, which he indicated today. He was like on a part-time basis, the way that it has to be done, and the way that the property standards have to be met. So that's good news, because he wants to come into compliance, and we hopefully don't have to go to court and expend legal bills for absolutely nothing. So that was a good, uh, that was good. Um, and then there was another property, and I'm sorry, I don't have the address, but it's, uh, the Tinkham property.
Two ninety-seven?
Two ninety-seven, perhaps, yeah. Um, we are, we sent out a letter asking for him to provide registration information on the vehicles that are in the property um, to see how many are indeed unregistered, because we really can't define it without going on the property, and that's not something we're, we're doing, so hopefully we'll hear from him within thirty days. The letter obviously asked him if they weren't registered or going to be registered, then they needed to be removed, so. or going to be registered, then they needed to be removed. So just a quick update on those properties.
That's it. Finished business from you. And finished business from the council? If not, we'll jump down to municipal warrants. I'll make the motion to accept the municipal warrants as they were presented this evening.
Second.
Motion's been made second of the warrants. Any questions or comments on any of those? We'll vote. Jim.
Hi.
Dwayne.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Marx and I. Uh, next meeting is set for February fifteenth, so that is Thursday, you said?
Yes, and if any town council member is available for the thirteenth, if they could come in and sign the payable warrant, then she can disperse their checks. So that would just be helpful.
Okay. Can't make the fifteenth date, please let the town office and other councils know. Before we jump into executive session, we'll see if there's anything from the live stream, questions, comments?
There is nothing.
Good night, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Here.
I'm sorry, you shut that off. I didn't want to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to enter executive session pursuant to one of MRS A four oh five six A to discuss the performance of the town manager.
Second.
Motion's been made second. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.